Many times, we don't understand the law. Law for the People with Eric Sidil is here to inform, educate, and answer your legal questions. Thank you for tuning in today. From the Law Offices of Eric Sidil, located at 1725 Greenville Avenue in Dallas, Texas. Here's your host, Eric Sidil.
Hey, guys. Thank you so much for rejoining us on Law for the People with your host, me, Eric Sidil. We have our second guest of the day here, Ms. Erin Moore, who is running for city council in District Nine here in the city of Dallas. Erin, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
On this show, we kind of like to get into, you know, who you are, what you're all about, and giving you an opportunity to kind of do that. So I'm just going to open it up for you and let you explain to everybody who you are.
Okay. I was born in Baton Rouge, grew up in the New Orleans area. My mom was an immigrant from Central America to New Orleans on -- she worked for United Fruit Company, which was an import -- a fruit import-export.
Right.
And she traveled on a ship to New Orleans, stayed there, met my dad.
Oh, wow.
And they got married in 1955 and stayed together until they both died in 2014.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So they had a long, happy marriage in New Orleans, and that was the environment I was raised in. Moved here in 1992 for a job at SMU, and taught there and advised the student newspaper in your book. And then moved on from there to other jobs in Dallas, but all the while volunteering in my spare time for causes I believe in, candidates I believe in, have done a lot of work in the community.
Okay. Where was your mom from?
She was born in Honduras and raised in Guatemala.
Okay. And they both passed in 2014?
Yeah. My mom died, and then my dad died about nine months later.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah. They were about the same, you know, age and had infirmities.
Yeah. My parents passed away, one in December of '09 and the other in April of '10.
Yeah. It happens like that a lot, especially with people who have been together for a long time.
Yeah. And very hard on the kids when you lose them that closely.
It is. It is. And, I mean, not to get too morose on this rainy day, but we lost my sister in 2007. So it was just me for dealing with all this. And frankly, in some ways, I mean, this is a political show, but we're getting pretty personal here. In some ways, it was a little easier to deal with because I could take my time with it. And I went through every inch of every page of every book in their house just to spend time with the things they had. And that helped close a lot of loops for me and, you know, just to ease into the process of letting go. So, yeah.
Well, I think that's a big part of, of course, who we are, even as people running for politics and everything. I'm going to show you my mom and the homage we have to her on the wall there. She worked for me. She was my first employee when I opened up shop here in Dallas. So for me, that's very important. I think it tells a lot about people.
Mm-hmm.
Any other brothers and sisters?
Nope. Just me left. I have two nieces, and one niece has three kids.
Yeah.
But, yeah, no, we're a small family to start with.
Yeah. Yeah. And you came from, of course, Louisiana. When'd you do that? When'd you come to Dallas?
I'm sorry?
When did you show up here in Dallas?
In '92 for the job, yeah. I was working at -- excuse me. Working at Loyola University in New Orleans, and that was during the oil bust.
Okay.
So the economy got really bad. They did a lot of layoffs, and I did get laid off. I ran a bookstore for a while there.
Is that right?
Excuse me. You got a frog in my throat. I ran a bookstore for a while there, but all the while applying for jobs. And I applied for a job at SMU, and they hired me.
Okay. Okay. Have you ever served a political office before?
Nope. For the last four years, I've been chief of staff for County Commissioner Teresa Daniel. She's District One. And we knew each other from just my volunteer work in the Democratic Party and other organizations. And when I got back from taking care of my parents and my parents' estate and belongings, I just decided I didn't want to be in the graphic publishing world anymore and wanted to do what I loved full-time. So I put it out to the universe. I applied for a lot of jobs at nonprofits, at political organizations. And Commissioner Daniel and I knew each other from a long time. We knew each other for about 15 years, and she says she had an opening. So that's how we wound up working together.
Okay. You mentioned some of the organizations and maybe people that you were supporting, you know, prior to your run. If you'd like sharing any of those with us, just kind of?
Well, sure. Yeah. I've been on the National Board of the Human Rights Campaign, which is a bipartisan LGBT Q rights organization fighting for equality legislation on a national level.
Yeah.
Been on the National Board of the National Stonewall Democrats, which was a partisan organization fighting for the same things essentially. Done both of those organizations on a state and local level as well.
Okay.
I've been a -- in 2008, I was a delegate to the Democratic National Convention for Obama. In 2012, I was on the National Platform Committee, which got marriage equality into the platform for the first time.
Okay.
So I served on that committee with Senator Cory Booker. And then locally, I've worked for a lot of candidates. Everybody from Ann Richards up to, you know, Lupe Valdez this past year for governor and a lot of local races, judges. If there's a Democrat elected in Dallas, I probably had some volunteer time on their campaign.
Yeah.
So, and I know the council is a nonpartisan race, but that's been my background.
Yeah. And seeing all that and being a part of all that, you still decided to run for?
Run for council, yeah. Yeah. And a lot of that is, I've always worked on a -- I have worked on campaigns on the local level, but I've always personally worked more on advocacy and policy work.
Right.
Trying to change things from a top-down kind of perspective. And then with the last four years working for Commissioner, I've really come to value and treasure the personal politics. You know, someone who's tried every avenue, is frustrated, picks up a phone, calls our office, and if we can actually do something for them, that's very powerful. One specific instance of that, a guy has had schizophrenia and was off his meds, and the police arrested him for being violent. Well, he wasn't being violent. He was being violent towards himself as a schizophrenic, and he got arrested. So we actually were able to get him out of jail and into the care he needed.
Yeah.
So that's a very powerful thing to happen. It's like direct impact on somebody's significant -- significant impact on someone's life. So because of that work, because of working for the county, because of working in current local government, when Mark Clayton announced he wasn't running again, I was like, well, this is my opportunity to do that work myself.
Yeah.
You know, I'm doing it on behalf of the county and with Commissioner Daniel, and it's very valuable work. But as an elected official, you have a different level of responsibility. And I think I can make a real difference in the district if I get elected.
Mark Clayton kind of announced, I wouldn't say out of the blue, but he was kind of surprised, I think, to a lot of folks in terms of him not running. And it was kind of expedited in terms of people kind of coming in to run. Was that something that you had been thinking about, the potential for running for council? How did that kind of?
It was. Actually, when Mark ran four years ago, I was considering it. And again, getting back to the theme, that was about when my parents started declining. So it just wasn't the right timing for me.
Right.
But the bug was planted in my head, you know, and I was thinking about that position. I was like, oh, well, you know, Mark will serve his eight years, and, you know, I'll look at it again then. But then when he announced, I was like, well, it's either time to do it or stop talking about it. So, and I'm actually very grateful I didn't run four years ago. I'm in a much better position now. I'm in a much better knowledge base now than I was then. I was eager, and I had a lot of experience and activity four years ago. But now I know, I've worked with the council on a daily basis as my role at the county for every day for the last four years. So I know who those people are. I've had good relationships with all the city council. I know I've worked with all of the current departments that have been formed in the last four years.
Yeah.
So I'm in a much better place now to represent the district.
Okay. Well, let's jump into that.
Okay.
Let's talk about, of course, kind of got a sense of why and opportunity and other things. But jumping on to the city council, what are you kind of looking at? What are your big-ticket items in terms of having a practical effect on joining the council?
Well, the, I mean, the big issue right now, especially with all the news, is the public safety issue.
Yeah.
I think we are in a public safety crisis. We've been short on officers for a long time. It was 1,000 after the pension crisis happened a couple of years ago. We've closed that gap some. I think we're down to about 500 or 400 short. So officers is a -- officer coverage is a big deal for the city. We've got to figure out how to fill those gaps. But I like to take that answer one step further. And instead of just talking about, well, we need more officers, we need more officers, that's a solution to a problem from one side of it. The other solution from the other side is to stabilize some of these neighborhoods that are experiencing such poverty. And some of that can be addressed through, well, there was a poverty task force that had some recommendations. There's a new housing policy that can help stabilize some of the neighborhoods that are more on the edge. Some of the initiatives that Mayor Rawlings has tried, I think, were coming from a good place, but I don't think they've worked as well as we thought they would. So we need to attack those from another standpoint. And I'm not saying we can get everyone out of poverty, but I think some of this crime, a lot of this crime, is from a place of desperation.
Okay.
You know, the person-on-person, you know, you ran into my car, or, you know, you said something about my wife, you know, that kind of thing. Those tempers were always going to flare.
Yeah.
Especially in the summer when the heat gets more.
Right.
But let's face it, those tempers are flaring because there's other pressures on those people's lives. You know, they don't have air conditioning, or they just lost their job, or they just got a big medical bill, or there's something that's destabilizing their life. So if the city can provide services that can help those situations, even if they're temporary or more long-term, then maybe some of this crime can be reduced from a community standpoint rather than from a sending police into the situation standpoint.
Let's talk about some of the services.
Sure.
What types of services could the city, and perhaps you, from, you know, joining the council, leading, I guess, a directive or initiatives that kind of address some of those things? What kinds of services could kind of alleviate some of the problems that you're seeing?
Well, there's -- the city has two problems that I think we need to address immediately. There are already a lot of services that people can access that no one knows about.
Okay.
So we have a communication problem.
Okay.
The other problem is, the city likes to do a lot of studies on things, and then they never get implemented. So there have been poverty studies. There have been housing policy studies. There have been homelessness studies, but they don't get implemented, or they get implemented very slowly, or a new council gets elected in two years and it all kind of gets pushed to the back burner, or things happen. So we like studies a lot. And to me, that's motion without progress.
Right.
The education part of it, I think, is another failing. We have got to get the information out to the communities that there are already some services they can access. One is, there's emergency temporary relief funds. Like, if you do get a big medical bill, or if your car breaks down and you can't get to work and you get fired, there's some emergency service grant money there to help those situations. It is limited. You do have to apply for it, but it's there. There's a housing improvement program where if you have structural or code compliance issues with your house, you can apply for a low-cost or no-cost loan to help get those up to code.
Yeah.
On a grander scale, the new housing policy has some tools built into it, but there's some tools that haven't been developed yet that we can, we have a real chance to input how those tools are used and what they do for the communities, to help stabilize some of these neighborhoods and keep people in homes that have homes. We have a big homelessness issue, you know, people experiencing homelessness on the streets right now, and it's growing by the day. Well, one of the ways to help stem that tide is to keep people in the houses that have homes.
Right.
So, I mean, it's a big system, and I like looking at the system. I don't like looking at individual problems and throwing money at that problem, throwing money at that problem, throwing a study at that problem. If we look at the system, maybe we relieve some of all of it together.
Okay.
You know, there's an old parable, and I've told this a few times, and it's not original to me by any means, but, and bear with me here. There's a person standing by a riverbank, and they see a cat floating down the river, so they jump in to save the cat. Well, more cats come, and more people show up and jump in and save the cats. One person leaves the crowd, and they all get mad and say, where are you going? We have a problem here. And they said, I'm going upriver to see why cats are being thrown in the river.
Right.
You know, so that's more my approach, is finding out what's causing the issues rather than throwing resources at the issue.
Yeah. Well, let's talk specifically about the communication problem. Communicating?
Sure.
That there are services out there. One, whose responsibility is that? And two, why has it been lacking, do you think?
I have great faith in TC Brodnax. I'm willing to, and I know this sounds off-topic, but I'll get there.
He's, of course, our city manager.
He's our city manager. And we have a weak mayor form of government, which means that the city council directs budget, directs policy, but the city manager and staff are responsible for implementing it.
Right.
They also run the departments. And for so long, we've had insiders. We've had people who have been there, who, this is the way we've always done things. You know, I know a guy, I can call and get this done for you kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Well, to me, the system should work the same for everyone. And TC coming in from outside, even though he's local, he graduated from University of Texas at Arlington with his degrees, has worked in other municipalities and can bring some fresh ideas in. And I think he's changing the staff in a really positive way.
Okay.
I think he's getting, he's either motivating people to not do things the way we've always done things, or to bring in new people who can make systemic change at the city. And I think the reason communication has been bad is because it's never been expected. And I think the people, some of the people that are at the city are like, well, that's not really in my job description, so I don't do it. Well, I'm more of a, I'm a roll-up-my-sleeves kind of girl. It's like, you know, if we need to move chairs in the auditorium, and I'm a city council person, I'm going to roll up my sleeves and move chairs in the auditorium and not go, oh, that's someone else's job.
Okay.
So I think the communications at the city, if we can, they do somewhat of a good job, but I think we need to go, you know, if there's a code compliance officer in the field talking to someone, hand them a brochure that says, here's some ways you can help repair your house. You know, not just writing them a ticket and saying, get this done. You know, so there's some, we have eyes on every city employee that's out in the field. They can be street, you know, street repairs. They can be doing, you know, building a trail. They can be co-compliance. They can be animal cruelty unit. They can be a lot of things. But if you see a problem, my first approach is always, here's how we can help, not, here's what you need to do, and here's a fine.
Yeah. I've talked to a few folks running for city council.
Absolutely.
Running for trustee and other things. And I think, you know, for a lot, and I know as a, running for office is, you got to kind of be careful in terms of what you say and where you go. I don't know why we don't do this more. I don't know why, you know, kind of the expectation is, well, that's not really where we should be going, or that's not the responsibility of. And you kind of hear that a lot. It's understandable. People have jobs and responsibilities, and they should be taking care of those. As a city council person, I think the obligation is on that council person, inclusive of the mayor, to hold people to account, you know, to the extent that we can. And at the very least, kind of expose those things that just aren't working, the inefficiencies. How do you feel about that and that obligation, and how are you going to kind of approach that if you do make it on the city council?
One of the first things I want to do, and I think they're starting to do this now, but we need to do it with more urgency, is an audit of every department at City Hall. And we have layered upon layered upon layered policy and direction, and I think the employees at the city don't know which direction to go a lot of times. So we need to do an audit to find out, one, where we are financially, two, where their policies and procedures are. And if we're doing good, great. Yay. Continue your work. If we're not doing good, it's not a slam. It's not anything. It's like, here are the things we need to correct to do a better job. I also think we need to review a lot of our contracts that we have that have just been on auto-renewal. It's like, do we still need this, whatever this contract is for, one. Two, is it written in such a way that benefits the city, or does it benefit the vendor? You know, because, I mean, we're contracting someone to do something for us. And three, you know, these public-private partnerships, we need to put a lot more public in them. We need more input from the public about what they want from these agreements, about what services are being provided by them. And I'm just going to keep going here until you stop me.
Keep going. I'm not going to stop you. I'm listening intently.
Four is, I think that the citizens are, there's too much burden put on the citizens to find out where their money is. I want full accountability and transparency in our government. The information that people call and wait on hold for three hours, or I don't know the answer to that, or they call the second day and get a different answer, I think that needs to stop. We have, I'd like to put online a database of, here's where every, and they have this to some extent, but it's your dollars. You should know where they're being spent and how they're being spent. You know, where every public works project is, where every street repair project is, where every zoning case is, who owns the zoning, who owns the property, and where is it in the zoning. A lot of municipalities do this. We're so far behind on technology at the city and accessibility from the citizenry. You know, I shouldn't have to call this department on this day between these hours and wait for two hours when I'm at work to find out an answer about a zoning question. It should just be, here's the site, let's look it up. Oh, okay. Move on with my day.
Do you think any of this stuff is intentional? Do you think any of this stuff is, well, you know, we don't need to do that, we don't need to, we don't need to make that information as accessible to every citizen who wants to go online and figure it out?
I think it was set up to be obscured.
Okay.
I think it was because of the old boy network that has existed for so long at City Hall. There's a real culture change happening, and we're on the precipice of it now. We have a real decision in this election. Do we keep doing things the way we've been doing them with people who know how they've been done in the past, or do we do things the way they should be done and move the ball forward? I think it was obscured. I think it's because it's a lot of back-room napkin agreement handshake deals with people I know, instead of an open public request for proposal, request for quote "process" that the public can, that can have input from the public. I also think the, these, the way the public is treated at the so-called open meetings, I think, is disgraceful. We make them sit through five hours of deliberations before they have a chance to talk three minutes on their issue.
Yeah. Here in the city of Dallas, and this is really important.
Yes.
Here in the city of Dallas, where we have a 14-1 setup, 14 districts, and then the mayors voted for at large. How realistic is it to, as a city council, an individual city council person, to either implement an agenda that kind of approaches some of these things or not? Tell me about that. You've, you know, worked with the city.
Absolutely.
And the commission. How realistic is it to have a single council person, one, bring to light these issues, and then, two, just addressing them as a council?
Right. Well, and the 14-1 is set up to be district-specific. And for a lot of times, and a long time, we've heard, well, my district, my constituents. My district, my constituents. And that's great. That's who is electing me to represent their district. But if we don't start partnering with other districts and think more regionally, we're never going to really move the ball forward. And I've already committed to, when I'm elected, working with the neighboring districts in my, you know, District 14, District 10, District 7, District 2 even to some extent. And let's get some regional projects done. Let's get some things that can make a real impact to everybody. The citizens don't really know where the lines are.
Right.
You know, for instance, air quality. I'm a big environmentalist. Air quality doesn't know where city line is. Air quality doesn't know where city council district line is. And there's some people out there that are really suffering. Dallas has some of the worst air quality in the nation. Kid has asthma, senior on an oxygen machine. You know, these are not just hippie feel-good things. These are people, these are health effects on people every day. So I'm very committed to working with not only neighboring districts, but I, like I said, I have a pretty good relationship with most everybody on the council. And you got to get to eight for to pass anything, right? You got to get to five to get a five-signature memo on the agenda, which, you know, has been used to some good effects, some bad effect. But I think if it's a good project, I think if it's something that really does help, I think there's more willingness to cooperate.
We were talking earlier, and we just kind of brushed past it. I'd really like to get into it because I think it's incredibly important. Dallas Police Department, of course, as people may be listening in, is, I don't think anybody believes that we have enough police officers here.
Right.
So, of course, you know, addressing the systemic issues that kind of create problems.
That's long-term.
And I'd love to get into that, too.
Yeah.
But specifically, we don't have enough police officers to take care of what's happening. I don't know that specifically the murder rate has gone up in this past month because of that. However, it certainly is a reality that we are, we don't have enough police officers to address what's going on in some of our higher priority criminal situations. When you call 911, there's a whole lot of complaints about, hey, the police didn't even come out. It took hours. It took this. It took that.
Response times are horrible.
Exactly. So what is the genesis of the problem with respect to the number of police officers we have on the force? Is it monetary? Is it budgetary in terms of what we're looking at? Is it a combination of that, and we're not able to attract the police officers? What do you think? And how do we address it? And what do we do about it? As a city council person, that's going to be an incredibly important issue.
It is. Well, the genesis of the problem is what happened a few years ago with the retirement fund. Police officers in Dallas were offered a median to a semi-low salary with the promise of a really great retirement. So that was, that was why they were staying on the force for a long time to get to that really great retirement. Well, the really great retirement evaporated. So now you have not only a low salary, stressful working conditions, but you also don't have a really great retirement. So people left in droves. And we were 1,000 officers down at one point. I think we've closed the gap, like I said, back to about 500, 400. Ways to address that situation. Instead of thinking we're the best place to work in the world, we need to create the best place to work in the world. We need to, yes, compensate our officers fairly, but money's not going, a loan's not going to solve the problem. The work culture is one thing. I think we need to relax our requirements for becoming a police officer. I'm just going to say this. I'm 54 years old. I'm active. I could be a police officer. You know, I might not get the 30-year retirement out of it, but who cares? You know, if you get 10 good working years out of me, you know, we can move some of the officers off of the desk jobs.
What is the current age?
It's 40.
40.
40's the cap.
Okay.
Yeah. So as I was saying, you know, if we can move some of the desk jobs and make those civilian, you know, non-officer positions, we can move, may possibly move some of those officers out into the field. We can subcontract a lot of the duties that police officers, we've put a lot of burden on our officers here. Traffic enforcement, you know, the, DISD has its own police force. DART has its own police force. Dallas County has the Sheriff's Department. There's a lot of law enforcement agencies or pseudo-law enforcement agencies that we that we can tap during this time where we have a shortage. Um, the priority response system that they have now, the level one, which is violent crimes, level two, which is against persons, level threes, which is against properties, and it goes down to level five or six. I think that's a good system when you're in a shortage for prioritizing police response. But if I'm the person in that situation, it's my emergency, and I wa, I need some response.
Right.
So instead of, instead of continuing in that mode, I think, you know, we need to find a way to, to relieve the stresses on the shortage until we can come up to staffing strength. Um, to, to, like I said, relax the income, the, the recruit requirements, not only the age, but right now, uh, it's a college degree required. You know, if I have military experience, that may be substituted for college degree, it may not be. I think, I think any dishonor, I think any honorably discharged veteran should have automatic waiver of the college requirement.
Okay.
Um, you know, they've obviously been trained, they have discipline, they, they can, they can do the job if they wanna come in. Um, our training academy, we spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars training a recruit, and then they go to Plano where it's safer and they get more money. Um, I don't, it would take a legislative change to do this, but, you know, maybe say, "We'll give you a stipend if you go work in these areas." You know, encouraging officers to live in the communities that they're serving, to become part of the community. Uh, even just some simple things, like letting them take a patrol car home. That makes the street feel safer, and they don't have to put that burden on their vehicles. Um, so there's some things we can look at and do. We can do culture changes, we can do monetary changes, we can do, uh, recruit, recruit restriction changes, uh, to help relieve the situation.
A few years back, AC Gonzalez was our city manager.
Right.
And we had the opportunity to meet through LULAC or, or other organizations with him on a, a monthly basis. His big thing, of course, was, you know, "We don't have the money to do these things because of what's happening with the pension." What we don't, people don't realize is we're, you know, potentially could become bankrupt.
Right.
Very scary thing at the time, and luckily, absolutely, at least to a certain extent, I think we've kind of, we've at least addressed it, you know, from the, from the precipice to, you know, kind of where we are now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that was his big push. You know, "It's the budget, it's the budget, budget. We don't have the money." What do you feel, and I've talked with a few, you know, candidates, and, and I think it is more of a, "We're not attracting, uh, new police officers to the force." Is it that, or is it the amount of money that we have to commit, or is it certainly a combination of both?
Mm-hmm.
What do you feel is kind of holding us back mainly? And where does that budget, you know, the, the money to allot or commit to some of these programs? Some people have talked about, you know, encouraging or giving housing stipends or other things to, to encourage them to come back to the city, 'cause most of our firefighters and policemen are not living in the city of Dallas.
You can't live here, yeah.
'Cause they can't afford it.
Right.
So those are things that people don't kind of realize. From your perspective, and in working with the city on the commissioners' court and other things, where do you think the big problem truly lies? I know you've kind of, you know, you're talking, highlighting some of, of the, uh, you know, recruitment efforts, but does budget play a, a role more so in the past, or how does that kind of play out for you?
Budget absolutely pays, pays a role. Um, and just to address the pension thing for just a moment, we, the legislature bailed us out two years ago. That was not a city fix. Um, and what they're doing to try and build the fund back up is what they call ghost uniforms. So they're, they're funding the fu, the pension fund as if we were at full staff, even though we're not. Um, but that's a temporary fix.
Right.
And the, we cannot coast for, it was a seven-year, uh, stopgap measure, we're two years into it. We cannot coast for the next five years and go, "Oh, we're in a crisis again. We've gotta figure this out now." So that part of the budget, yes. Um, ninety, about ninety percent of the city budget goes to first responders already. You know, there's not a lot of flex.
Explain that, explain that to the folks listening right now. Ninety percent of the city.
Yeah, the, uh, you know, when we talk about budget and fighting for this project, or fighting for that project, or splash grounds at the parks, or, you know, this new road project, whatever, ninety percent of the budget is already baked. It's already spent. We're either, it's either going to debt service, or it's going to first responders, fire, police and fire. Um, and city staff, city staff salaries. So we're really talking about ten, maybe fifteen percent of the budget that we have any way in at all. And that's what you see, in, if you've ever listened to city council during budget, that's what you see people arguing over is, "Well, I need it for this, well, I need it for that." And then there's kind of a, a needs inventory that's done, and the higher needs get addressed. And they've done it different ways in different years. Some years, each district gets the same amount of money. Some years, well, District four needs more money than District nine does right now, so it's getting its higher proportion. So it's been done different ways to try and do that. Um, so finding money for police officers, money alone is not gonna solve the problem. No one becomes a police officer to get rich.
Right.
You become a police officer because you have a higher sense of duty to the community, because you wanna protect and serve. You have, um, you know, a union. I am, I am endorsed by the AFL-CIO, uh, so I understand union strength, uh, that can protect you from certain job situations, or, or, you know, uh, collective bargaining is a very powerful tool. Um, so I really think it does come down to things like tax abatements or stipends for, for working in certain areas, for perks that you can get as being a police officer in Dallas. And I agree that we've got to get police officers and firefighters back into our communities. Um, you know, even if, say, there's a, an apartment complex where we can, uh, let them live, pretty much rent subsidized, you know, live together in a certain area. I don't know, there's, there's a lot of creative solutions we can implement if there's a will to do it.
Okay. You are running in District nine.
I am.
If you could, for the folks, of course, who are listening in, may have no idea, one, what the city of Dallas is kind of all about.
Yes.
Specifically District nine, some of the issues that might be there, and, and kind of the, what, we, we talked a little bit earlier about what a city council person does in terms of representing the constituency of that district, but also, there's an obligation citywide, I would think.
Yes.
So tell us a little bit about District nine, what it's kind of comprised of, and, uh, and, you know, what specifically issues or of concern in District nine that you hear.
Uh, District nine geographically, just so people know, is, it's roughly Abrams to Ferguson and, uh, east, or west to east, and then Northwest Highway down to Gaston. So it's, it's literally around White Rock Lake. It's a third to the west and two-thirds to the east of White Rock Lake. And I say that only to highlight that it's really, uh, you know, we talk about a tale of two cities in Dallas, above thirty and below thirty. District nine is a tale of two, two districts, east of the lake and west of the lake. West of the lake is very affluent. It's got a lot of money. Um, it has issues, too. I mean, people there are still suffering from road issues and property tax issues. Um, and east of the lake is suffering right now from a lot of gentrification. There's a lot of the, it, it's the new hotspot in Dallas 'cause it was affordable to come in. And, uh, I live in a nineteen fifty-three GI Bill House. Uh, you know, I've got pink and blue tile in my bathroom, I've got the molding along the, you know, the, the roof line. Um, and what's happening now is developers are coming in, tearing down those houses, building zero lotline, uh, modern houses, and it's raising everyone's property value so much that a lot of people who are on the edge, who are on the bubble, are getting taxed out of their houses. Um, and it's, it's a very working-class area to the east of the lake, Casa View, Casa View Haven, even parts of, um, Casalinda, Reinhardt. There's a lot of neighborhoods that are, you know, these people, people in those neighborhoods are working two and three jobs to hang on. They have a lot of family members living in the house to share expenses. You know, it's, it's like a lot of areas in Dallas.
Yeah.
Um, so, so that's one of the big issues that's happening. There's a big homeless population in District nine. Everybody thinks it's downtown, but because of the lake, because of the wilderness areas, they, they're living partly in the park. They're living along six thirty-five Encore right-of-way. Um, there's a tr, uh, the, the, there's a train track that goes through the district, and there's a lot of opportunities there for, uh, you know, tents and, and places to huddle and live. So there's a really big homeless population in the area, and we, that's one of my big, uh, issues, is we've got to figure out ways to get services out of just downtown and to where people need them. And I'm not talking about homeless shelter, although I'd be willing to have that discussion. But just, you know, food resources, health resources, mental health resources.
Right.
Uh, addiction recovery resources, to where people are. Because frankly, a lot of people are homeless still, not because they can't access, not because they wanna be, but because they can't access the services. If it takes me three hours to get downtown to get an ID at the bridge, and three hours to get back, is that really worth my time? You know, when I'm trying to find someplace to eat, someplace to sleep that night. So I'm a big proponent of something called the Housing First model.
Okay.
Which, you know, the, the, the easy, the easy answer to that is, the answer to homelessness is a house, is a home. The, the much more difficult and longer-term, you know, solution to that is finding affordable housing, putting people in a bed every night so that they can go get a job, go get the care they need, go get addiction recovery, go get mental health services, go get, um, you know, childcare. When you know where you're putting your head every night, that's a lot easier than when you don't.
Yeah.
Uh, and frankly, most people experiencing homelessness right now are in a temporary situation. They're fleeing a domestic violence situation, they've had a huge medical bill, they've lost their job because their car broke down. They just need some temporary help. The chronic homeless, um, which I participate in the count every year, the point-in-time count that happens in January that's HUD mandated, um, the chronic homeless feel like the system has abandoned them, that they cannot access the services, they need to get out of the situation they're in. And there's gonna be a certain percentage of people that are like, you know, "I was in jail, and I never wanna be in an enclosed space again in my life," you know, or have some other situations, but the majority of people on the streets don't wanna be on the streets.
No.
That's a myth, that, you know, they, they wanna be in this situation.
What, I'm so sorry, what is, what does the city of Dallas look like in terms of its homeless population, maybe in comparison to other cities?
It's, uh, well, it's a moving target, because, you know, to, it's like the census. You're never gonna find everyone. Um, some people are experiencing homelessness this day, but not that day.
No.
Or they're in a shelter for the night, or they found a couch to sleep on for the night, and when we do the count, they're not considered homeless. I've heard estimates anywhere from about, around ten thousand.
Around ten thousand.
Yeah, and it's grown nine percent this year, it grew nine percent the year before. So it is a growing, a growing population, um, that can't be served by shelter services. Shelters and the jail, the criminal justice system are the two most expensive ways to, to, to address the homelessness issue.
Yeah.
What we need to do is the Housing First, find affordable housing. Um, we need to address the, the systemic causes and root causes of the, of the homeless populations. And, and frankly, you know, it's, it's a, it's a regional issue, you know, like, like we were talking about with air and water. You know, the city lines don't matter.
Yeah.
Um, and, and getting people off the streets needs to be more than just getting them out of our sight. It needs to be getting them care.
Specifically in District nine, in all honesty, I'm in District nine.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and of course, I, I, I work, have an office here down on Greenville. Of course, around here, I see a lot of homeless folks and, and know a lot of them.
Yep.
A lot of good people, quite honestly.
Yes, absolutely.
And, uh, don't, didn't know as much about District nine in terms of the homeless, may not see it quite as much. Is there any way to kind of gauge the population of homeless in, in a particular district?
Not really. I mean, it is by definition a transient population.
Right, right.
Um, and I, I know where some of the larger encampments are.
Yeah.
And the, the city of Dallas has the Office of Homeless Solutions now, which is under, uh, one of the assistant city managers. And they're doing a really good job, but it's fairly new, it's very underfunded. We just did a twenty million dollar bond package for them, and twenty million dollars is not nearly enough. There's four tracks to their program that they've submitted, three have been approved by council, and the twenty million goes to one of those tracks, which is to develop more housing.
Yeah.
Um, the first track is shelter improvement, the second track is emergency and inclement weather sheltering. The third is trans, is, uh, uh, temporary housing for just people who need just to leg up. And then the third, the fourth is permanent supportive housing. So, uh, you asked the question about District nine, and the, the only answer I can give is, nobody knows.
Right.
Uh, we know it's an issue, we know that it's a city-wide issue, it's in District nine, it's in every district. And I frankly think every district needs to step up and take a part of solving, um, you know, finding help for people.
In the last few minutes that we have.
Sure.
Aaron, really important to me and close to my heart is, is of course, DISD.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, relatively recently, there was a poverty, uh, task force. Uh, we were looking at some of the issues, I think ninety percent of, of our, of our DISD population, which is, you know, seventy-four percent Hispanic, Latino, uh, ninety-two to ninety-four percent faces of color, uh, just a really high level of, of these kids are living in poverty. As a council person, you know, what obligation do you think a council person has? Of course, DISD is an independent school district, and, and they have that. But I think there's, there's definitely a connection, or should be a, a connection, between the city, government services and other things, working along with DISD to kind of address some of these overarching issues. Uh, one, what do you think the responsibility is of city council to kind of address that and kind of become part of it? And are we doing enough to kind of reach out to DISD and, and have that working relationship that we'd need?
Uh, last question first. No, we're not doing enough.
Okay.
Um, and first question answered in, in this, we, you're right, they are a separate governmental entity, and the city council should have no part in directing DISD, but we should have every part in cooperating with DISD, working together to solve some of these issues. Poverty is not a DISD issue. Poverty is a city issue.
Right.
Um, some of the city rec centers and splash grounds, you know, if, if kids don't have a place to go after school, let, let's open those up, let's offer some food, some fresh, healthy food, some education, some programs where they can go. Let's all open up our parks to recreational opportunities, um, during school. You know, let's, let's help create some safe routes to school so kids can actually walk to school and don't have to depend on an unreliable public transportation system, or, um, or walking in unsafe streets. Let's, uh, you know, there are so many opportunities to cooperate together and fix some of the systemic problems that we have that, uh, we have not done enough of that, I agree.
Aaron, as we run out of time, uh, why don't you let the people who are, uh, listening in, let them know a little bit about when the election is?
Okay.
And, you know, just some parting words.
Uh, early voting just ended. If you haven't voted, please do. The closer your door is to my decks, the more important the election is. Uh, not enough people participate in municipal elections, because I think they think it's like jury duty. It's like something I have to do but don't wanna do. Well, you should want to do this. This is the person you call when you need help. Uh, the election day is Saturday, June eighth. Um, it's Saturday, June eighth. It's not on a Tuesday like most elections. So you should have time to stop in. There's literally two things on the ballot. It takes three minutes. Um, if, if your local government, your local representation is not worth three minutes, then I suggest you reconsider that. Uh, please, 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 please go vote. We're at six percent voting right now. Six percent of the city of Dallas is making decisions for you, and that's, that's not the way it should be.
Aaron, thank you so much for coming on for Law for the People.
Absolutely. Thank you, Eric. I appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Guys, thank you much, so much for joining in with, with us on Law for the People. Once again, we're here every Friday from one to three, so, uh, jump on in. Uh, have a wonderful weekend, and, and thanks a lot.